Here to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. It's the last day of April, so it's the last day apparently to get to the April showers in for our May flowers. We'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Just a reminder to go ahead and silence your cellphones. Meeting documents are available for review next to Commissioner Heiburger. And Carol is here if you need a listening device. That takes us to routine business. I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes from April 23, 2019.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is bills to be paid in the amount of $392,128.66.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments? Commissioner Barth.
Madam Chair, for the second week in a row, we have two funerals that we paid for. And Crooks Fire got $15,594 in today's bills.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? A motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I'd like to bring your attention to several reports. And I'll go ahead and, Carol's gonna talk about that, sorry.
Yes, auditor staff is all in training this week, today. So I just wanted to point out that you've got your monthly report for the general fund. You've also got a report in there for the highway fund. I would point out that for the month of March, we ended with $6,951,364, which is an increase of $600,000 over last year. I would point out that this is before a lot of our bulk of our property taxes go, come in. So we'll see that number higher next month. I would also point out to those that are listening, we do not have reserves. We don't have investments that are out there on top of this. This is what we operate off of. You will notice in the last couple charts that are out there that we're real close to anticipated on everything, both expenses and revenue and in target where we were at last year at this time.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Carol? I appreciate that. Thank you very much. There's also a Safe Home Audit Report for 2018 for review. Next item is personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Second item, Carrie Dever.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I have a request to convert Jason Gierman, who you may recall used to be a captain with the Sheriff's Office, and he's currently serving as the variable hour Director of Emergency Management. Request to convert him from variable hour to full-time at $2,944.80 effective May 6.
Madam Chair, I do remember Jason. I'll make the motion.
Second.
In a second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
The next item I have is a request to reclassify our vacant Highway Bridge and Sign Supervisor position. You might remember that that's a pay grade 18 position. DJ Boothby has looked at it and reviewed his current organization and thinks it could be better utilized as a maintenance project coordinator. After we looked at that position, we're recommending classification at a pay grade 16 and immediate recruitment if you approve. And DJ is here to explain the request further if you have any questions.
Your questions this morning?
I'd make a motion to approve that recommendation.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is abatements. There are none. Item seven, notices and requests, there are none. Item eight, planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item nine, petition for compromise of lien, there is none. So that takes us to an opportunity for public comment. Anyone that's here who'd like to speak about something that's not on the agenda, this is your opportunity. Since there's a lack of people rushing to the podium, we'll move on. Regular business. Item 10 is a brief presentation by the President of the Minnehaha County Fire Chiefs Association on the activities of the Volunteer Fire Department. Mike Harstead. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Harstead, I'm the Volunteer Fire Chief up in Crooks and past President of the Minnehaha County Fire Chiefs. We like to come in usually a little closer to the first of the year, let you know kind of how the last year went for us. With our awesome weather this spring, things have been a little busy for the departments in the county. But I'll give you a little information about the last year for us. The 11 volunteer fire departments in Minnehaha County responded to 2,047 calls for service in 2018. It's the first time we've ever gone over 2,000. You know, for a little perspective, I started in Crooks about 20 years ago, and that year was the first year that we broke 1,000 as a county. So in 20 years, we've doubled what we've, what we're responding to. Some departments that were extra busy, Brandon responded to 476 calls. They are a very fast-growing community, but still 100% served by Volunteer Fire Department. Hartford was 266 this last year, and Del Rapids was over 200 as well with 204. So I want to bring those numbers to your attention because the 11 departments in our county are comprised of 331 volunteers. And volunteerism across the country is on a significant downward trend. And we're seeing that in the departments, but we've, we've been very fortunate. In 2015, we were awarded a Safer Grant through FEMA that's for retention and recruitment of volunteer firefighters. We were awarded $580,000. That grant goes through November of this year, and those dollars have spent, been spent completely on recruitment and retention of the volunteer firefighters in the county. In the, in the three and a half years that we've had the grant program going, we've recruited 78 volunteers for our agencies, which if you look at today's numbers on the departments, that's 24% of the current volunteers have been recruited in the last four years, basically. Which is a good thing, but it also means several of our services are very young. And it's very, very difficult to find members anymore. You know, like I said, volunteerism is on a downward trend, and we're doing what we can to, to work with that. So we've had some challenges this last year. Like I said, the snow and the floods this spring have been, have presented some very unique challenges for us, especially when you look at communities like Del Rapids and Baltic and Renner. We've had to do a lot of things as far as mutual aiding with those departments and such. My department in Crooks, we help out with Renner quite a bit. You know, half of their coverage area is cut off by the river, and when those roads are closed, they can't get there. So we have a very, very excellent automatic and mutual aid program in our county. And with the help of Metro Communications, with their, with their dispatching software, we can make changes on the fly and say, okay, when, when the road, you know, when the bridge is closed to Renner, they can make changes in their dispatch software, and they can have Crooks or Baltic or whomever automatically responding when, when they should as well. So it's been some unique challenges this year. And, you know, it's raining again outside. Surprise, surprise. So that's not going away either. We continue, I know several counties around us have initiated burn bans. And it's odd this year because it's not a burn ban because the burn danger is high, it's a ban because the roads are darn near impassable in the rural areas. We, as a group, haven't felt the need to go that far yet, but I know I've spoken to several of the departments in the last month, and when you start to respond to calls in the rural area right now, it's sketchy. It's sketchy at best. I know the townships are doing all they can to keep those roads serviceable, but it's a challenge. It definitely is. We've had some changes at emergency management with a new director, and that's going very, very well. Jason's been a great help. He, he got thrown into the fire right away with all these floods. He's done a great job for us. He's, he's learning as we go, but he's doing very well. I would like to call special attention to the volunteers at emergency management as well. They play a really critical role for us departments. You know, when we go on fires, they're one of the only places in the county that we have that can, that can come out and refill breathing air bottles for us. And in the, in the state of the fire world right now, for forever and ever and ever, the last 20 years, it's been the number one killer of firefighters is, is health-related things, heart attacks and that kind of stuff. The cancers and that kind of stuff are quickly coming up the ladder as far as, as cause. And we, all the departments take that very, very seriously. And one of the big things that we can do to mitigate that is to make sure that our guys are breathing tank air all the time when we're on those types of fires, instead of, you know, it's only when it's absolutely necessary. So those folks play a really vital role in being able to come out to, to our calls and help us out by refilling bottles and so forth. And I know that they've been struggling a little bit with volunteers there as well. They are included in our recruitment efforts. Just in the last week, one of the main drivers for that recruitment effort, we have a website that people can go to to find more information and submit, you know, if they're interested in volunteering. And just in the last three weeks, we've had four new inquiries to the website that are, that are specifically looking at search and rescue with, with the county. So it's, it's working there too. I want to say one more thing about Metro Communications. They have been doing an excellent job for us, as always. Most recently, last week, we had the yearly test of all of our emergency weather sirens. And what we found was through some glitches, some other things, a lot of the sirens in the, in the county were not functioning. And so Matt Thule and the crew over at Metro did an awesome job of basically going down the list in the entire county and one by one fixing problems. And by the time we got to, I think it was Wednesday was the actual national test, by the time we got to that, everything in the county is up and working again. And we simply just didn't know it because we haven't thankfully had a, you know, a tornado in a, in a, in a little while. So they've been a great help to us. So with that, I just want to thank you all for your continued support. Commissioner Barth is a very regular attendee at our monthly meetings. I certainly invite any of you that would like to come and visit with us. We meet on the third Wednesday, third Wednesday, right? Third, third Wednesday at 7:30, and we, we move it around to the different fire stations in, in the county. So Commissioner Barth certainly knows where our meetings are gonna be. We keep him in on all our email lists, so, but we'd certainly invite any of you to, to come out and visit with us anytime you'd like. So that's all I have.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
Chief Harstead, by the way, you serve food there.
Yeah, we do serve food there. That may be why Jeff comes, but I'm just throwing that out.
I just want to point out that this load of calls, you know, I talked to a firefighter 10 years ago in Hartford, and he said that back when he started, they had 50 calls a year. And he's one of the few guys that actually worked in Hartford. And he said, now that they're, you know, getting 200, he can't quit work 200 times, you know, a year and, and go on a call. And you look at Brandon there with 476, it's not two a day, but it's more than one a day. And what a burden it is for people who are willing to put it on the line for their neighbors, their families, their relatives, and their communities. It's, I don't know how they do it.
Well, like I said, for perspective, when I started in Crooks 20 years ago, that year, we ran 40 calls. Let's see, last year, they've got us on for 130. So it's, the, the numbers are growing very, very rapidly. Definitely.
Any other? Commissioner Karski.
Yeah, Chief, just thank you for what you do. We look at volunteers and our communities around Sioux Falls and in Minnehaha County just do a great job of responding when asked, so I encourage you to keep up the, the asking. Who, who hasn't seen the commercials? And I think you're doing a fantastic job with putting the word out, but it's always about the ask. And I think if you ask, you're gonna keep people coming in. And I just adding this because I want to encourage people to do and to train because it's about the training. You respond to the level you're trained to, so it's not just the calls, but it's the ongoing training and that type of thing. So, you know, you're not thanked often enough, and I just want to put my thank you out there to what you do and to all the people that work with you, what you do. Very much appreciated.
Commissioner Barth.
Madam Chair, there are a couple other firefighters here in the room. I think maybe they should stand up and, for a moment. Come on, guys.
You guys have been duly invited to stand up. Thank you to all of you.[915.82][915.82](applause) Well, thank you very much. I appreciate you guys all coming today. You know, I think that as more and more people move out into Minnehaha County, I think a lot of people don't even recognize that you guys are volunteers and the great service that you provide to every community. And so, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Okay, that takes us to our next, item 11. It's a brief presentation on the Sheriff's Office.
Before the firefighters leave the room, I want to take a moment here to thank you for what you do and what you've, the level of service that you provide in our county is tremendous. And we have, my deputies interact with you all the time. Our EMT program works in partnership with you. I was reminded just this last week, I presented a check from South Dakota Salutes for $10,000 to the widow of a firefighter in, in Argyle, from the Argyle Volunteer Fire Department, which is just south of Custer. And her husband, Dwayne Hudson, was 72 years old and on his way to the fire in the fire rig, had to jump out and close the door on the rig and came back in the cab and had a heart attack and died. And the fire chief was there when we presented the check to, to his widow, and he said the average age out there, and I think it is in South Dakota, is 58 years old for our volunteer firefighters. And 58 years old, in my book, is young, but quite frankly, fighting a, fighting a fire. I appreciate your efforts to recruit younger people. I think the time will come where South Dakota will have to look to, you know, trying to find a way to reimburse firefighters, whether through some type of insurance or, or a retirement of some kind, something to keep and retain firefighters, volunteers, because they are really struggling and in part because of the volume of calls that you are responding to. And it takes a lot. Like Commissioner Barth said, they're, they're leaving, a lot of the people now in your firefighter, fire departments work in Sioux Falls, and for them to leave their job in Sioux Falls and go up to Baltic or Crooks or Valley Springs to fight a fire in the middle of the day is very difficult. And so, again, for you who have done this and do this, and I have tremendous respect, and I just wanted to say that before I do my Sheriff's Office presentation, so thank you.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I will, my part will be brief, and I guess, it says brief presentation, so I'm okay being brief, I guess. I'm gonna talk a little bit about just, just an overview of the Sheriff's Office side of the Sheriff's Office operations. Obviously, we have the Corrections and Jail Division, kind of a separate division, and we also have the Office of Emergency Management. We'll present on that in another commission meeting, but to talk a little bit about what operates out of the Law Enforcement Center and our, and some of our other contract services, we'll just talk a little bit about what we do. See how good I do here. So the mission of the Sheriff's Office is to preserve public safety and the quality of life within our county. And here are some of the divisions that we operate. And you're gonna hear from two of my captains today. We do patrol services and security contracts. Not only do we do patrol services throughout the county, but we also serve as the Municipal Police Department in all of the cities in the county other than Sioux Falls and Brandon. So, you know, you all approve contracts with cities like Hartford and Humboldt and Valley Springs and Crooks and Colton, and Baltic. Del Rapids, we're full-time up in Del Rapids, and it really is a great service that we're able to provide in partnership with those communities. We have an Investigations Division that is really part of this multi-jurisdictional Detective Bureau that we have in the Law Enforcement Center, where you don't really know who the deputy sheriff versus the city police officer versus the DCI agent. They're all working these cases and together. And I have Captain Phillips here that's gonna talk a little bit about, just giving an example of how an investigation works that ties in all of those agencies, because, trust me, I know enough sheriffs and chiefs in, in America to tell you that this isn't the way it always works. You have sheriffs that hate the police and the police that don't like the sheriffs, or usually in the administration area. Fortunately, I, I'm spoiled. I was a son of a highway patrolman, so I'm very close with our highway patrol. I was a Sioux Falls police officer for 24 years, so I'm very close with them and have great respect for them. And now you're sheriff for almost 22 years. And so I've just got tremendous respect for the law enforcement that we have in our community, and as such, we really work well together. We talk, like I said, we have emergency management and jail, those are gonna be separate things. I would be remiss if I didn't touch on what we're seeing in our community on the drug side. I just wanna, it was interesting that, that last week, I met with, we had a meeting with the, all the chiefs and sheriffs in South Dakota. And we were really fortunate. We were one of five sites selected for the Director of the Bureau of Justice Administration, the White House Director of BJA, who is responsible for billions of dollars of, of funding that goes out to state and local governments. And the Director of the Cops Office came to, to interact and speak with all the chiefs and sheriffs in South Dakota. That's unheard of. I mean, it was a great opportunity for us. And they were surprised with what they heard. Because what, they wanted to know, what is the number one thing facing your communities, whether that's Falkton or that's Sioux Falls? The, the answer was the same from everyone they asked, and it was methamphetamine. Said methamphetamine is driving the addiction issue in their communities, it's driving the crime in their communities. It's driving the domestic assaults, it's driving the rapes, it's driving the robberies, it's driving the burglaries. And you have sheriffs in communities that can't go out and have dinner with their family in a restaurant, because they only have one or two, and, and people that are chronic users of meth are cooking their food. So they just choose to eat a lot at home, I guess. But it's driving crime in our communities, and it continues to drive it in our community. Not very many of them are experiencing a lot of opioid cases, other than we're starting to see in some of those rural communities, more and more opioids showing up. In particular, heroin, fentanyl is starting to show up, and so they're having some overdoses in those communities, but it's not at the level that it is in our community. Unfortunately, our, as you can see, our overdoses are up. We're at 23 overdose deaths just last year in Minnehaha County. Nine of them involved fentanyl as the cause of death. Now, nobody takes fentanyl to try to, they don't do it to kill themselves. They take, they take fentanyl because it, maybe it's, just happens to be in the batch that they got, and that they thought maybe it was heroin, some kind of an opioid. But let me explain real quickly why that, why they're overdosing and dying. Typical fatal overdose of morphine or heroin would typically be about 200 milligrams. For fentanyl, it's two milligrams. So it's, it's that much more potent than, than what you see with, with heroin. Carfentanil, it's 2/100ths of a milligram. That's the grain of salt overdose death. And so what we're seeing is the influx of fentanyl and synthetic opioids that are killing people. And, and it's sad, and, you know, it is something we need to continue to address. With that, I want to pass on one more thing, and that is that I couldn't stand up here without talking about the Triage Center really quickly, because nothing's had me more excited about something that is a bright light in the, on the horizon, something I think that, somebody asked me, is it gonna cure our opioid crisis? And I said, no. I wish it was that simple. Every community would have one. But the reality is, this Triage Center, there's, everybody in this room, I think, knows we need it. And I appreciate the leadership of the County Commission, and now the leadership of the Mayor and, and City Council in stepping up and saying, let's get this train going. You know, we worked on it for five years, it's time to, to see it happen, and I'm, I'm excited, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate your support for those efforts. With that, I'm gonna just let one of my division commanders, Mike Walsh, you ready? I'm gonna let Mike Walsh come up, talk a little bit about his patrol operations, and then after Mike, I'm gonna have Josh Phillips, who's the Captain of Investigations, I'll have him come up and give a little bit about the Detective Bureau.
Thanks, Sheriff. Morning, Commissioners. Mike Walsh, Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. I get to lead the Patrol Division, so I want to give you kind of an update of where we're at with that. Patrol continues to be pretty busy with a, with a myriad of calls. Everything within the spectrum, we continue to see. In addition to that, a lot of special events, like the fair and hot Harley nights, which we inherited last year, will have again this year, and I suspect we're gonna continue to have, because it was a pretty good success out at the, at the fairgrounds. Within the Field Division as a whole and Patrol Division, talking about mental health training, the Field Division, which encompasses patrol, investigations, warrant, civils, more than 81% of our sworn officers, from the sheriff all the way down to the newest deputy, have been trained with either crisis intervention training, which is a 40-hour course, or mental health first aid, which is eight hours. Patrol itself, the guys in uniform on the street, more than 75% have had crisis intervention training. In this 40-hour course, all of the deputies who have, who have left it have, have used it on calls other than mental health, and every last one of them says it's one of the best courses they've been to. And I would, I would say that one of the areas that SWAT responds to is suicidal subjects. Those calls are dropping significantly because the deputies now have the tools to handle these things without the escalation to, to having to use a tactical team with this. And so to me, that's one of the greatest successes. Of the 25% of field deputies that have not had it, many of them are still in peer at the academy or in field training, so they haven't had that opportunity. It is, it is and continues to be our goal to have 100% mental health training for anyone that has contact with the public. It's, it's just incredibly important, and it's proven itself over and over. ALICE, that is a, that is a type of training that responds to active shooters. And that sort of training has evolved over the years since 1999, when Columbine happened, and currently, the best we have is, is ALICE, and it's proven to be very successful. All of our SROs and a couple other deputies have been trained with ALICE, and they've been going out into the schools and other entities to train people. Gotten really good feedback with it. I know the entire staff at STI has been trained, and they requested a second training because they didn't feel like it was long enough because they, the training, then they had question and answer session, and not everyone got to ask questions because they were that interested in it. So we're, we're gonna be arranging a second, a second training for them. This past spring, as the fire chief, President of the Fire Chief Association and the sheriff said, we had some significant flooding. I will say with, with some great assistance from Investigations, who threw some of their people in the uniform, maybe didn't fit as well as it used to, but they were in uniform, we got out there and we've had a very robust presence anywhere we had flooding. And I think a good indicator of how well these deputies handled that is we didn't have any injuries or deaths. These guys got out there and really got after it. We met daily with the Del Rapids administration because they had some significant floods up there. Prior to these events happening, I was at many of the fire chiefs meetings with Commissioner Barth. And one plug that I will give the fire chiefs is, when presented with a problem, not only do they attack it, they attack it with innovative solutions. These guys were coming up with ideas that I have no idea where they came from, and just did a fantastic job. And I can't say enough about those fire chiefs. They do a great job. Part of our responsibility in the community is, is school resource officers. And in addition, we have an Explorer Program. An Explorer Program is kind of an offshoot of the Boy Scouts of America, where kids can go into a particular field that they might be interested in. And what I will say is our, is our SRO deputies and Explorer leaders have become great leaders with the youth of the community. They're, they're doing some really great things. Obviously, SROs have mandated duties that they have to do, whether it's teaching there or being a presence in the school. But outside of that, these deputies are mentoring students, they are assisting with driver's ed, they're taking interns and other students along for ride-alongs during the day, showing them exactly what a, what a deputy sheriff and a law enforcement officer does during the the day. Uh, we get great remarks, uh, from, from all of the school administrators. Uh, whenever I have any email contact with them, it's, it's basically starts and ends with we love deputy X, Y, or Z. Don't ever let them go. That kind of thing. Uh, so they're doing a really great job. And our explorers, uh, I had, I had the great fortune to attend their challenge this, this past year, uh, at the college. And they are just incredible kids. They work very hard. And these deputies, uh, come in on their off time and work with these deputy, uh, these explorers, teaching them everything from fingerprinting in crime scene to how to properly pull over a car. Um, and I think, uh, the benefit of this paid off is, um, several of these explorers have now become police officers and deputy sheriffs, maybe not here, but in other places. And as you know, recruitment for law enforcement has become more and more difficult. And this program is just one area in which we can certainly ensure that we're going to get some good quality applicants in the future. Community involvement. Um, for someone like me, maybe unlike others, I like, I like going out and being seen and speaking with the kids. Some deputies, uh, you know, would prefer to just handle calls, but they get to do it too. Uh, and I will tell you that very often I get emails and calls from entities requesting that our deputies come to their events. Um, they want the deputies to bring their cars or their equipment or the bear cats, but the most important thing they want to bring is the little badge stickers because every last kid wants at least four of those and a couple more in reserve to bring home to their brothers and sisters. Uh, and so we stay pretty busy with that, um, with a, a, a number of different events. Uh, certainly some are listed there and there, and there are many more included with that. As you know, uh, the air guard security, uh, section is led by Keith Winia. Uh, you guys have seen him many times and he is an exceptional supervisor out there. That, that group out there is very strong. They have a good, strong core. Um, one of the, one of the benefits of, of having that group out there is many of them get promoted to deputy sheriff. And that just goes, is a testament to how hard these guys work and the quality of work they're doing. Another testament, I would say, is very often these deputies are asked to serve as supervisors out there. You know, in, um, in air force terms, I believe it's called flight leader. Maybe Commissioner Barth knows better than I do, but...
No, but, uh, I don't.
Um, but it's, uh, that, that's really a, a direct result of the quality service that they, that they provide out there. Um, in fact, the service has been so strong, they've been requested to up their manpower out there. Uh, another, another 33% to go from 12 officers up, up to 16. And that's a direct result of the great service these guys are providing out there. Um, and again, I can't say enough about Officer Winia. He does a fantastic job. The last couple of sections of, of patrol, uh, the airport security section, uh, it's led by Steve Van Hall. Uh, I will tell you that when we took it over a year and a half ago, I had no idea how busy they would be out there. But every month I get the airport logs in which they log their daily activity. And they're dealing with the exact same calls that the street officers are dealing with, uh, whether it's drugs or domestic violence or, uh, intoxicated subjects or anything like that. And they're doing a fantastic job. Um, they, uh, it's staffed fully with part-time officers, but all of these officers are full-time law enforcement officers with a different, uh, different agency. So they, they have the full training and, and they put it to use out there fairly often. And lastly, Southeast Tech Security, uh, that school, uh, has been, uh, has been very supportive of us. They, uh, you know, unfortunately, I keep promoting people to deputy sheriff, so we have to keep filling that. But the officers that remain out there are fantastic. They do a good job. And what I will point out is very often these officers at STI act as mentors and more in a role of a school resource officer out there. So they, they, they stay very busy doing things outside of what's spelled specifically in their job description. Um, and I, you know, I, within all of the sections in patrol, w- we are, we are blessed to have some really fantastic personnel, uh, and supervisors there. They certainly make my job and the sheriff's job easier. And with that, I'll stand for any questions? Thank you.
Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, and, uh, Captain Walsh, it looks like if you, uh, unbutton your shirt, you'd still have your Marine Corps uniform on. But I think that, you know, I, I've got to compliment your division there in that recent case where a intoxicated individual, uh, pointed a, a weapon which turned out to be loaded at, uh, one of the deputies. In, in so many, many communities, people pull out their cellphone and get shot. I mean, we didn't have that headline. We're not faced with a, a trial of that nature in our community. And I got to say, that's really showing training and experience. And thank goodness for our deputy being that restrained. I, I can't thank you enough.
I appreciate that, sir. And, and I will happily pass that on. What I will say is, uh, the, the deputies that we have, uh, on, particularly on night shift, are go-getters. They are the best and the brightest. Um, I, I will disagree a little bit about the experience because many of them don't. But what they do have instead of experience is professionalism, good decision-making skills, uh, and a, a, a trust in themselves and a trust in, in, in this department that they are going to go out and do the right thing. Um, these, uh, these deputies, unfortunately, are facing these things fairly often. Um, this, this one was significantly past what it normally is, but every day our, our deputies are doing just a fantastic job dealing with it. And I would, I would also point that directly back to CIT training. Uh, this, this CIT training has been innovative. It's really been a game changer for us. I'm not so sure, uh, I think it was more of a quick reaction in this particular case, but in all of the other instances in which these things have happened, CIT training has done it very well. Um, we, uh, we, we try to get deputies to it every, uh, every six months when it comes around. If it came around four times a year, we'd get deputies to it four times a year. Uh, but we're going to continue to do that. But I, I appreciate that, Commissioner. I'll pass that on.
God bless them.
Anything else?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners. Uh, Captain Josh Phillips with the Investigation Division. I oversee general crim detectives, uh, the warrant task force, narcotics, and then CNU. Just want to talk a little bit about today, about our inter-agency cooperation. The sheriff mentioned that earlier. I think that's a integral, uh, part of what we do with the investigations. This case in particular will show you kind of how we all work together, not just the sheriff's department, but all, uh, different entities. Uh, this case involved, uh, started around November of last year on Ditch Road, uh, 258th Street. So the Renner uh, Road, just north of that. Uh, Ditch Road goes from 60th Street North all the way to Baltic, commonly used for locals in that area, uh, at different times in the morning and night. It's used for other extracurricular activities. There is a lot of stops and a, a lot of arrests made on that road. Uh, this one, uh, early morning hours around nine o'clock, uh, driver by saw, or passerby saw, uh, male laying in the ditch. Um, deputies responded. We had a EMT-trained sergeant that was right on scene. Um, he was able to determine that individual was deceased and had been there for quite some time. Uh, we were immediately notified. We shut down that area. Uh, we just had a heavy rain. Uh, we were worried that any evidence at that crime scene could be gone. Um, and so we ran that scene for probably five hours. It's a very slow process, even though we're right just north of Sioux Falls. It, it took, it took us a while to really process that scene. We didn't know what we had. Um, people that responded to that scene, uh, we contacted the Sioux Falls Police Department cap section, had their supervisors come out. Um, the warrant task force, who, um, knows a lot of people in this area, they were notified. Um, we had DCI, uh, the coroner and the state's attorney's office. So we processed that scene. And what we're trying to do is identify the victim. That's the only crime scene we had. Um, and so we processed that scene. We're able to identify the victim. And that information just wasn't held within the sheriff's department. It was shared with all the other entities to help us work this case. After we processed that scene, we have like a meeting at the law enforcement center. And all these other entities were there. Um, and our lead detective for the sheriff's office kind of went over the case, what the, the victim's last known location and additional information. And then that, that detective will sub out to all agencies. Ours will intermix with the PD, DCI, and we kind of worked this case. So this was a classic whodunit. So at the time, we did not know anything other than who the victim was. Um, subsequently, after that interview, um, a witness came forward and our lead detective for the sheriff's office did that interview. And it was determined that this crime occurred, the original crime occurred in the city of Sioux Falls. And I think without involving the PD and the other agencies, they would have been behind the eight ball and then trying to, there's important information they could have missed. So as soon as we found that out, that was, um, immediately, uh, shared with them and a flawless transition was given to them to work that case. We didn't stop. Our task force was in all the meetings because they knew there's eventually going to be suspects in this case. And they wanted to be up on that. And those guys, if there's anything to find on anybody, they're going to find it. And so that's what they're really good at. And they, they were on top of that. Um, suspects were identified and within a day, the task force had both of those apprehended, um, safely without any other incidents. Um, it's a prime example, uh, again, of the inter-agency cooperation the sheriff talks about. I can tell you, in other agencies, this does not occur. Um, there was a, a good resolution to this case. Um, the suspect pled guilty, uh, life in prison with no parole. And I think without all the agencies working together, this outcome might not have happened. And so as a newly appointed captain, I think that's, I take pride in some of the stuff that we do. And this is one. And it just kind of shows, it shows our new detectives, our deputies, everybody's on board for something like this. So I wanted to share that with you today, kind of how we, uh, cooperate with all our other agencies. So any questions on the investigation side? So now I'll put on a different hat that does not fit very well, but the civil division, uh, Captain Bosman couldn't be here today. So I'll talk just a little bit about our civil department. Um, and I've been with the sheriff's department 15 years. And this is a, a part of our agency that it has a lot of moving parts and they do a lot of things that people don't see. Uh, but they are always busy and, and you can kind of look at the numbers. They continue to get, um, even more busier. So they average about 900 temporary and permanent protection orders each year. And that's through our deputies serving them. They serve them at the office. We have part-time people serving them. And, and those are risky things to do, but those numbers keep climbing. Um, court ordered evictions, lockouts, they have increased from 200 to 290 per year. And that's a, that's a three-step process for a lockout. Generally, the first step is a, a three-day notice. Our deputies usually serve that, will go to the residence, put one on the front door and the side door. Um, and then the tenants have the right to, to pay to get up, caught up on their, their lease or whatever, or they, they leave the residence. Uh, the second part of that is a summons and complaint. Um, and that's a, a court document. That's the next step. They say, hey, you, you need to leave, um, or, or pay up on your apartment or lease before you get evicted. The third, and the most risky one, is the lockout. Um, we do something unique here in Minniac County where if there's a lockout that's going to occur this Friday, we don't just go there at nine o'clock. We usually give them, well, a, a day notice, say, hey, will we be coming at nine and, and you will be locked out of the, the residence. And so that's something that I think the civil guys have done to, to, um, let the individuals know, hey, this is the final step in this process. And if, anytime you go try to take somebody out of their house, it is a, it is a, a risky, high-risk situation. And so we're trying to afford that, that time to let them know. Um, these are, usually we'll have maybe a warrant guy go on this along with the civil sergeant and a couple of civil deputies. So this is something that, um, i- is, if you look in across the country, lockouts, this is where incidents occur, is when you're trying to evict somebody from their, their property. Um, we also do them on, it says in 2018 mortgage foreclosures. We do do lockouts there. As you can see, the numbers have went down. I think that kind of fluctuates with the economy. We probably see that maybe two years after the fact that the economy goes, economy kind of goes down. Then two years later, we'll probably have more mortgage for, uh, foreclosures. Uh, mobile home property taxes collected in Minniac County, 93,000, uh, last year. Um, and then, uh, 500,000 collected in return creditors due to executions. Um, in speaking to the civil division yesterday, um, right around $400,000 they brought in for the civil division of, and for Minniac County last year. So any, any questions on the civil side of things that I can hopefully answer? If they, all right. So I'll let the sheriff come up here and, our closing here.
It's interesting that, you know, people will ask me, I, I saw a deputy sheriff car at 33rd and Spring yesterday. Why are they there? Why aren't they out patrolling the county? Unfortunately, or fortunately, when they wrote the statutes way back when, the sheriff is responsible for the service of warrants. So, uh, we have about 20,000 warrants that are served annually. Fortunately, our partners in law enforcement, uh, Sioux Falls PD, the Highway Patrol, when they query a, run a warrant check on somebody and they're wanted to bring them in for us. But it's a statutory duty of the sheriff. And the same for the civil process. So the police officers don't serve protection orders in Sioux Falls. We do. Police department doesn't evict people and do the lockouts. We do. So when you see our cars, your cars in the, in the city of Sioux Falls or Brandon or Del Rapids, that's likely something that they're doing. And it, it is an additional level that deputy sheriffs have, uh, in their daily duty. The, the patrol division deputies are all also tasked with trying to serve priority protection orders. So to victims of domestic abuse. Um, uh, so they're looking for someone who abused their spouse or, you know, had, what, were in an abusive, they're looking for the abuser. And so that can present additional dangers as well to try to locate that individual. And that, sometimes they don't know why they're after them. And, and the lockouts, again, get a little testy when you're removing someone physically from the property that they want to stay on. So the good news was foreclosures were down. Um, that's a good sign of our economy, I guess. Uh, um, but the, some of the other numbers are, are, you know, what they are. But I will tell you, and I will echo what, uh, Captain Walsh said, we are blessed to have, uh, you know, tremendous, um, members of our department, dedicated, public servants. I'm blessed to have Chief Deputy Boyd and my captains, uh, support me in the administration of this office. And, um, with that, uh, that completes our presentation. I'll take any questions if you have any.
Any questions? Commissioner Karski?
Just a comment. Sheriff, thank you. And your captains and deputies, everybody in law enforcement, um, kind of add on a little bit more with what you were saying about the drugs in our community. And, you know, opioids, if you can't get opioids, a lot of times people turn to the meth and, and heroin and that type of thing. Um, what people have to understand is, and I'm, I'm getting this from the medical community, is there is no typical meth user. They could be 62 years old. Um, they're not an 18-year-old strung out on the street. They can be anybody. And our triage isn't an end. It's a beginning. So when we talk about our triage project, it's a way to begin the process of helping people and to getting them to the right place. Um, you, you know, I've been involved in the project since I was fortunate to gain this position. And, um, I'm excited about the process, pro, progress we're making towards that also. Um, just plugging what you said and looking for more community support so people understand really what we're up against. Um, but thank you for what you do and for just keeping it at the level it is so that people understand the issues that we face in our community with the drugs. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, thank you. I thank all of you. That was, I thought, compelling information. It's very, um, interesting. There's so much that you guys are responsible for that I think the day-to-day citizen doesn't really focus on. You know, most of us hope to avoid you guys if we can. So, uh, we appreciate all the work that you do every day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay. So that takes us to an overview of the Northeast Area Transportation Study, DJ Boothey. This shows the wide variety of things that the county is responsible for in going for law enforcement to roads. So thank you.
Good morning Commissioners. DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. Uh, in December of 2017, the Highway Department and the County Commission hired HDR Engineering, uh, set out, uh, to investigate necessary improvements and costs of those improvements that might be needed in the next 10 or 15 years, uh, in the northeast part of our county. Uh, we looked specifically at four different highways. County Highway 103, County Highway 109, County Highway 113, and County Highway 104. And so we have Jason Ginstead here from HDR Engineering. He's going to present a PowerPoint, uh, just kind of summarizing the study and, and what's in the final report. Uh, final report's available for any of the commissioners that wish to, uh, review it. But, uh, that's going to be an important tool as we go through the budget process and the long-range planning process, uh, how we look at, uh, any kind of those improvements that might be recommended. So I'll hand it over to Jason.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, Jason Ginstead with HDR Engineering. Uh, thanks for having me today. I'll, uh, try to run through this briefly. Um, last year I was here and we kind of, uh, did, uh, the beginning part of the study. Um, I'll just kind of go to the next slide here. Uh, if you look at the map that we have here, uh, right now, Minniac County, the- If you look at the map that we have here, right now, Minnehaw County, the asphalt corridors that they have are primarily in a grid system that are typically in a width of four to five miles wide. And so if you look at 121 to comparison to 113, you have about five miles between those corridors. The uniqueness of the portion up in the northeast corner, from 113 over to 103 is, within a six-mile width, we have four miles more south that are paved. And so as the Highway Department looks at their amount of revenue that they have to do their roadway work and understanding the cost that it takes to make roadway repairs, we really wanted to start looking at this as something that would be maybe five to 10 years ahead of when any of the projects would be completed. And so before we kind of indicated we would start this study, just wanted to review a couple of the study goals. We wanted to review the future, you know, cost of reconstruction along with the maintenance that takes place on the variety of corridors. One of the important things that a lot of counties are facing is having good feedback from the landowners. This isn't unique to Minnehaw County. This is happening all over the state with the funding deficiencies. And so for our study, we had about six, seven different interactions with the landowners out in this area. And I think we were able to work with not only Minnehaw County, we worked with about four other counties in the area, along with South Dakota LTAP and developing costs associated with the different improvements. And so if you go through the report that we submitted, it's about 20 pages of text and then some different kind of other documents that kind of show you how we arrived at some of the things that we did. But we'll kind of go through just the highlights of the study. We're going to start just with, you know, on the side of initial costs, really what did we learn? And this isn't anything really new for you folks. We picked, our corridors are an example, are six miles north to south, for example, on Highway 103. If you go up to the roadway that takes you into Minnesota on Highway 11, down to the south end, we have six miles. We equated a total cost of about $5 million. When you add all the ancillary items that always come up, the design, construction, the permitting, the right-of-way acquisition, all of those things, the county's spending about $1.1 million to reconstruct a road for asphalt paving. If you look at some of the recent projects you've done over the last couple of years, your construction costs per mile have been around that $800,000. So when you look at the other items that take place before the project, this falls right in line. And so that was one thing we wanted to identify was those initial costs. The second was, in terms of funding, if we don't have the funding to replace it in asphalt, if we had a comparable typical section, they certainly aren't the same, the shoulder widths vary a little different, the depth of the gravel changes. When we go through and run the same numbers for the same corridor, we're about in that $600,000 per mile. And so you have about a $500,000 per mile difference between asphalt and a gravel roadway surfacing. The other unique thing that we looked at was user costs. And so when we look at these costs for someone that's driving on an asphalt road all the time compared to driving on a gravel road, there's a cost difference to the landowner. And so we'll touch a little bit about that. The second really part of the equation isn't only the initial cost, but it's what it costs to maintain these roadways over a lifespan. We typically use anywhere from a 20-year lifecycle to a 30-year lifecycle. For this project, we chose 30 years. That's a little irrelevant, but anytime you build a roadway, either concrete or asphalt, if you do normal maintenance, 30-year lifespan should be something that you should get out of that road. And the unique thing when you do that, we heard a lot of public engagement saying, well, if you build an asphalt road, it's more expensive initially, but gravel roadways are more expensive every year to do. And what we found out, what they indicated to us is something that we found out to be true. Right now, the county has an annual maintenance of about $10,000 per mile. And so when you look at the initial cost of about $1.1 million per mile over 30 years, you have a cost of $36,000. And then you add with all the items of chip sealing, crack sealing, patching, potholes, miscellaneous, you come up with about $46,000 per mile. When you look at gravel roadways that carry traffic, what we believe in excess of about 250 vehicles a day, we have an initial cost down at $20,000, but when we look at dust control, gravel replacement, regrading the roadways, labor costs, bog graveling, we actually come up with a cost of about $25,000 per year. And so this wouldn't be your average township road that has 20 to 50 vehicles a day. This is a roadway that would be county traffic of a couple hundred or more vehicles a day. And so one thing I wanted to point out is, when we look at dust control, that's not just an item that we put on our roads just for the sake of when someone drives by a farm place, that they don't get dust in the yard. There are also structural capabilities to that magnesium chloride or calcium chloride that you put in the roadways. And so if you have additional truck traffics, the dust control chloride certainly helps the structure of the roadway. And so what's unique is if you look over a 30-year timeline, as we did, we found that it's about $46,000 for an asphalt road versus about $45,000 for a gravel road. And so essentially, the costs are primarily the same for these gravel roadways that carry a high volume of traffic. When we look at the user costs, and this is kind of the bottom table and it just, we picked a number of 160 vehicles a day, this is probably average. These corridors out here can fluctuate anywhere from probably 150 a day to 300 in peak egg season. And so if you look at passenger vehicles, trucks, we kind of broke them down, ran the numbers on the cost per year. If you look at what that's costing the folks that are driving the roadways, it's about $11,000 a year difference if you add all of those trips up. And primarily, if you break that down, I grew up on a dairy farm, you're replacing tires about twice as fast on gravel that you are in asphalt. And so a lot of the cost breakdown comes in that. And so we don't necessarily use that to be the final decision-maker, but if everything else is equal, we look at things like that to kind of push in one direction or the other. And so for Highway 103, this is our, kind of our farthest east corridor. This six miles, based on the landowner discussions, based on the egg traffic that's on it, based on the dairy, Moody County Dairy being right there, or Moody Dairy being right there. We had a lot of public feedback on the typical section that's out there. We have a typical section that doesn't have any shoulders. The culverts are very close to the road, they're not extended out to the clear zones. For a lot of different reasons, our recommendation on 103 was to continue kind of the course, reconstruct 103 as an asphalt roadway and really try to do that in the span of 48 years. And so in terms of feedback, we got back from the public, the folks that lived along the corridor, I think they were happy with this recommendation. I think some of the things is, they wish we could do it sooner. When you look at a corridor that's going to cost six to $7 million, just on the construction side, that's probably a timeline that the Highway Department can work it into their budget. But all in all, at the end of it, we'll have a much safer road. And the other thing that we had mentioned to the folks that were out there is, one thing we always struggle with is getting right-of-way. Right now, we only have a corridor of 66-foot of right-of-way. And so if the landowners would like to start pursuing, working with the county on getting that right-of-way in the next couple of years, that could expedite the potential of getting this project done. So all in all, I think 103 went pretty smoothly in terms of the landowner feedback. Going back to the little map here, the other thing that we want to look at is, how does that really lie with the existing grid system? 103, as I said, is on the east side. And so that, along with 113, kind of puts us at that five-mile area. So it's pretty consistent with the plans for your north-south network. Now we're going to skip to County Road 109, and so we're going over about four miles. A few things that are a little different. 109 was reconstructed at a time span not as far back as 103. On 109, we have 40-foot of right-of-way. We have a much better asphalt section on that corridor than we had on 103. We do have shoulders that are around anywhere from one to three feet that exist out there. And so the safety along this section versus 103 is considerably different. We didn't have the same public feedback in terms of the concerns of going off the road and having vehicles that are overturned, those type of things. And so we looked at it differently. So this assessment is really applying to 109. The traffic volumes on this corridor are lower, we have lower truck traffic. And so we looked at three different solutions. If you look up in the top box, optional surfacing costs, so if we just go through there and replace the surfacing when this roadway would need it, we're looking at about $500,000 per mile. Right now, we're in that area of about 160 vehicles, certainly well below what we would probably do if this was a gravel road right now. At 160 vehicles, we probably wouldn't look at putting an asphalt surface on it. And so we looked at two things. One, doing a conversion by milling and grading to gravel, that would, and equate at a cost of about $120,000 per mile. Then we also looked, since these landowners had bought homes or lived along this corridor that had asphalt on it, we wanted to look at a hard surface option. And so we did that. The bottom table indicates the cost for an out-of-surface road or a conventional chip seal is essentially the same thing, and that's running about $200,000 per mile. And so again, we looked at the user costs, there's really no changes when it comes to the user costs. We're still, if we go to gravel, we're going to spend more money. And so our findings and our recommendations are a little bit different here on County Road 109. Due to the roadway volumes, due to the network, the adequate typical section that exists, this is a corridor that the county really isn't going to have to touch for many years. You're probably 10 years down the road before you're going to do anything to 109 besides probably some pothole fixing and some general sealing. And so this isn't anything that's really on the beginning end of spending money on, thankfully, this road's in pretty good shape. But when it is time to make those improvements, we're recommending that it be not fully reconstructed with asphalt, it would just be placed as a conventional chip or an out-of-seal type of roadway. And so we kind of set that threshold after looking at all the numbers at 150 vehicles. If we go down 10 years down the road and this roadway is at a lot less than that, then I would consider going back to gravel on County Road 109. And so the feedback that we got on this corridor, you know, obviously, the first thing they would like is to have an asphalt road, that's, you know, who wouldn't? But I think they like the idea of having a hard surface road. When we look at the network, 109 lies just one mile from Highway 11. It doesn't really fit the normal grid system. So I think there was this idea that, you know, what we were looking at did make sense. Just a couple other photos. A conventional chip seal road or an out-of-seal road, if you look on the left picture, they're usually about the depth of a quarter, maybe a quarter and a half of hard surfacing. And so the Highway Department crews would clean this in the winter, no different than they do an asphalt road. And for the type of volume that's on here, I would say a conventional chip seal. If you go to most of the towns in South Dakota that are 800 people or less, their roads are conventional chip. Most people just don't know it because it's black and they have pavement markings on them, just like anyone else. And so concerns were how durable was this? It can be very durable, put down with the right application. But for the money and for the traffic, this is what our recommendation is on 109. We're going to go to probably the most controversial area of the study now. And really, what we're looking at with this is, from Highway 104, the Del Rapids Road, as it curves on 102 up to Highway 11 to go into Jasper. And this is a corridor that certainly warrants reconstruction with asphalt, volumes of 250 to 300 vehicles per day on this roadway, provides that network connectivity. The biggest thing that we wanted to look at in this study was, right now, we have some concerns. We have a horizontal curve that exists at this location here, and then the tie-in to 111, we have a, the gravel road comes up to meet the asphalt. And so we have three locations along this that if we could do it differently, we would rather not have those type of curves associated with the county road. And so as we went through it, we ran the numbers. If we reconstruct that 3.5 miles, certainly that would be at a higher cost than it would be to try to make a connection of pushing 104 over to Highway 11. We looked at a variety of alignments. If we look to the south, the County 104 connection over to kind of where the church is located, if you know where that corner is, 246th, we have some very bad sight distance at that corner. And so trying to bring more traffic into that area wouldn't be something that we would recommend. And so going to the south may be an option, but it wouldn't be an option to connect into the church. And so we looked at a variety of options, really anywhere from trying to push it straight through all the way up to the mile road, to the north, tie-in. And there probably is some locations that you could make that connection, however, there's waterways that exist in there. There's a lot of different things, probably for the reason that there isn't a road that goes straight through there now. And so just a couple other bullets I wanted to share. The top bullet is kind of alluding to the S-curves. But the bottom one, as I kind of indicated, this area was the most concerning in terms of our public feedback. And so the owners that really were, I would say, this mile here, you know, obviously didn't have the understanding that it would be possible to put a road through here in the future. With this study, maybe that was the first time that that had been brought to their attention. And so we got a lot of letters from them, or comments, I should say, you know, pointing the county or the study to, you know, shy away from, you know, trying to do anything in this area. And we also got some feedback from the folks that lived along the asphalt road here, that they would also like that to be maintained asphalt because they drive on that now. If we were to extend 104 through and tie-in to Highway 11 wherever, really, the recommendation would be to take this section, this 3.5 miles, and turn it back to gravel because the volumes on it will be very, very, very low. And so just to kind of sum up our recommendations, we would recommend, because there's some pretty large financial benefits of at least looking at, at a higher level than we did with the study, an extension of 104. And I think that would take place really anywhere in this mile. That would be something, there is some SP funds that the state has that the county could apply for to do an alignment study of that nature. And so I think that's kind of the role, is have some discussions with DOT, see if we can get some money to do kind of a cost share for an alignment study and see if it does make sense. That would certainly help the landowners know if that was something. This isn't a location that we'd look at construction probably in the next five to 10 years, but probably in that 10 to 15 years is when you would look at completing that project. If it's not feasible under that study to do the realignment, then we would just go through and reconstruct 104 to 102 and probably flatten out those curves to the extent that we can. So like I said, that was the highest responded area in terms of public feedback. And certainly, we took all of those things into consideration, understand where they're coming from. The last little section that we plugged in, DJ didn't mention, but County Road 124, this is an area that's asphalt that connects into the state line, into a roadway that is currently gravel. This corridor has about 75 vehicles per day that drives on it. Again, this roadway is in decent shape, it's probably going to be this way for 10, 15 years. But before any reconstruction would take place, this would be something that would be more conducive to going back to gravel with the traffic volumes that were on, that are on this corridor. And so, you know, three to five years prior to converting, I would start getting with those landowners, getting them ready to make the change over into gravel. And so what does this really mean? If you look at all of the different corridors together, you have 15, 16 miles of asphalt at a price tag of about 20 million. If you would look at and accept the recommendations in the study, you're probably getting closer to about half of that dollar amount. And so that's why it's important to do these type of studies. The county can now, as they're a part of the MPO, put this in their long-range plan and start looking at how those dollars are going to be spent in the near term. But kind of the next step moving forward, probably in the next one to three years, you know, try to get the alignment study conducted on 104 to determine if that's possible, and then actively start discussing right-of-way needs on County Road 103. And so like I said, that's probably a construction period with that price tag of, you know, maybe four to eight years out. And we kind of indicated to the folks, it would probably be a two-year construction period. So DJ, you got any other items? That pretty much sums up kind of the updated briefing on the study. But it was, it was good. We had a lot of landowners that attended our meetings. I think when we had, we had specific meetings on 103 and 109 separately, probably 20 to 30 people in each one of those meetings. And then when we had our public meeting, I think we were in that range of 30 to 50. And so good feedback. I think everybody... I think everybody, you know, has directions that they would like to go. Our job really is just to, to listen to their comments, convey them to you, look at the costs, and make a recommendation, so.
Thanks, Jason. I didn't have anything necessarily to add to his presentation, but I do know that there are some adjacent landowners here if the commission wants to make an opportunity for a comment by the public. But that's all that we have for the presentation. We could address any questions that the commission has now.
Commissioner Karski.
On 103, the right-of-way acquisition, fourteen feet, is that what we'd be looking at gaining?
We'd be looking at seventeen feet on each side.
Seventeen additional on each side. So, we don't try to take thirty-two feet from one side, or thirty-four feet from one side. We try to, okay. Are those costs of that land factored into the costs that you showed us?
I don't think so.
Yeah, yeah. So, we, we estimated, it's about two acres per mile when you add that seventeen additional feet. And so, those right-of-way costs are in. If you go to, let's go back to the table here quick. So, that was kind of one of the ancillary items that we show. And so, if you look at number four, item four on either, either one, that we use about ten thousand dollars per acre. That's something that at the time of acquisition, they'll do comparables and figure out exactly what that is. But we did include that for the, for the corridors.
Thank you.
Other questions? If any of the landowners who are here would like to come forward, if you'd just come up to the mic and introduce yourself and give us your address, that'd be great. So, name an address.
Well, to follow the pattern, good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Arnold Edwin Loffen Jr., better known as Sonny. I am one of the landowners, and I'd like to explain a little bit of why.
Could you give us your address, please? I'm sorry, could you give us your address?
I'm sorry?
Your address, your street address?
Well, that's one of the problems living outdoors. Twenty-four, four-thirty-two, four-hundred-and-eighty-fourth Avenue, Jasper, Minnesota, which means when I go downstairs, I won't take my check to pay for licenses, even though I pay for tens of thousands of dollars of real estate tax. But we'll leave that issue lying, all right? Anyway, I was a farmer that had to work in town to support his bad habit. And I met my future spouse, and we got married. And she is an optometrist in Marshall, Minnesota, a medical professional. And I was living on a farm in McCoak County. So, we began searching for a place to live that had to be on a hard-surface road on a line somewhere between Sioux Falls and Marshall. We lived apart the first year of our marriage. We found a farm that was for sale in the tough times there on four-hundred-and-eighty-fourth Avenue. We bought it. We have been commuting ever since. She has to get there. Her patients are booked out two months in advance. And that's the only reason we located there is so that we could be on a hard-surface road. We've raised two daughters that are building new homes, raising fams in rural Minnehaha County. We don't get much for service from Minnehaha County out there. Now, the police and fire guys are great. I totally agree. I appreciate everything they do. The crime is up out there, and obviously, the deputies can't be out there patrolling all the time. Our internet service is third world at best. What we do get is roads. And I went to one of these meetings, and the meetings were not well-promoted. Is that my? My hearing's bad. Others that live on that road, like Tom Bisson, that has a high-end business producing customs wine, lives on the other side of the road, which means he's in Moody County, but he still has legitimate interests. He wasn't even aware of that. One of these gentlemen sitting here did not know about it. He farms on every one of those roads. And if they abandon that chunk of 104, the truck traffic from the northwest comes across the county line and down to pick that up, to follow it over to Highway 11 and go on into Jasper, Minnesota. I raised the question, well, our real estate taxes are going up every year. Why can't we fund our roads? And then, I was informed readily, haughtily, that in Minnehaha County, we do not use road taxes, real estate taxes, to fund road repair. It's all on wheel tax. Okay, well, I was blindsided by that. So, I did a little bit of research on wheel tax, and I found out that the Minnehaha County wheel tax is capped at sixteen dollars. But I have a chart laying in my briefcase there of all the wheel taxes in every county in South Dakota. It shows that thirty-four counties have a higher cap than sixteen dollars, and twenty-two of them have a tap of sixty dollars. I mean, we're capped at sixteen, so a semi with eighteen wheels is paying the same tax as a passenger car. Now, I've been around a long time. I've never seen a cost study for a company that cost-cut its way to success. You need to provide goods and services. I'm willing to pay for goods and services. If you need to raise the wheel tax, if you doubled it, if that's all your road fund is from, you would still be at thirty-two dollars. That would be less than a significant number of counties. But again, I don't know all you, you probably know things that make me look like an idiot. I'm used to that, okay? I don't object. But that's, that's aside there. My wife and I, the daughters are starting families and have families. The farmhouse is too small. We're investing a major amount of money. We're building on extension so we can get the whole family together on the run roof. Other people are building new homes around there. Some of them didn't get notified of these meetings. At the meetings, I talked to people after the meeting. Most people did not know. They assumed that their testimony at these meetings was being taken down or recorded or some way would be preserved for prosperity. But instead, they had a form there that you had to fill out and send in. Most people, they did announce that once or twice, but people were busy talking. It wasn't well-communicated. There are a lot more people concerned with this than just me. And then, we get into the aspects. So, if they extend 104 through there, I'm a wildlife enthusiast. I leave some land in CRP, even though it brings in less income that way for the benefit of the wildlife. I've been doing it for years. And that's a, that's a wetland where they're going to extend 104 through. And it's right there in that wetland. I have personally seen cranes, ducks, all sorts of wildlife, including civic cats, better known as spotted, eastern spotted skunk, which is a rare creature. And right there, just past where they proposed running that across, Pipestone Creek is coming down and cutting through under Highway 11. And the runoff from those fields to the west and that, all funneled down in there, and Pipestone Creek feeds, joins together with split rock, which then joins into the Sioux over here. And we're trying to improve water quality in the Sioux River. And if we run that road through there, it's going to affect the ability of that wetland because there's a little creek comes through there right where that new road would have to be. And the Pipestone Creek is home to a lot of fish, including the Topeka shiner, which is an endangered fish species. And one of the problems in Pipestone Creek is interactivity levels, which is sediment and water. I went and took a lot of pictures this spring after that flood, of the water flowing across through that wetland. And it was remarkable how clear that water was after coming across that wetland through that mile as compared to what was going into it off those bare fields. So, this is going to be an issue. And I'm concerned, again, I, I bet, I think we have good county commissioners here, but I'm concerned that the rural areas are increasingly, when I talk to people, I have a foot in both camps. I work in town, I live in the country, a farm, I work in town. There's a lot of things going on in rural areas that people are unhappy with on their roads. And they're unhappy when they call to see, well, which one of the commissioners lives in my, my area? And they all live in Sioux Falls. Well, I understand that. I'm not complaining about it. But, you know, I, I don't ask for much. I've never asked for anything from the county I didn't pay for except once. When I first came up here.
Let's keep our comments just to this road project, okay? Can, can we just keep your comments to the road project particularly?
Okay. Yeah, I was just going to say, I asked years ago to have the county highway department backgrade my ditch. I wanted to clean it up. I was shoved off, put on a list, and never got done. All I'm asking this time is, please, don't degrade our roads. If you need to raise my taxes, raise them.
Thank you. Any questions? Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, if you could just keep your comments brief and not repeat comments, that would be great. Name an address, please.
Robert Harms. I actually live in Del Rapids, so my address, one-zero-zero-two T. Off Trail, Del Rapids. But the property I own is two, twenty-four-forty-four-eighty-fourth. It's, and the address is Jasper, Minnesota, but we're in South Dakota. But I just have a couple comments. First of all, I don't think the bypass from 104 to 11 is feasible. Like Mr. Loffman said, that goes through a low area. Pipestone Creek runs through my pasture, and it's frequently bank full and floods a lot. And it would just, that'd be an interesting study if they do it in two, three years. But you're going through a wetland for quite a bit of that. I, my suggestion is straighten out the curves a bit. And then, where 102 accesses Highway 11, come back a couple hundred yards and make that a T. You would have good sight either way to enter Highway 11. There's local truck traffic. There is also a conduit from Highway 23 in Jasper to Del Rapids and to the interstate that a lot of trucks use. So, it needs to be a hard-surface road that can handle truck traffic through that area. I think I would encourage you to consider the philosophy of a county highway. A county highway is not meant to be a high-speed state highway. It's a hard-surface access road that can handle truck traffic and keep commerce moving. This spring has been an unusual spring because the gravel township roads have just fallen apart everywhere. But every spring, there's always a spot here and there on a township gravel road that gets soft and needs some maintenance and, and is trouble for trucks. So, I would just hope that when the study's done, that you maintain the current roadway, keep it a hard-surface road. Don't let it, it doesn't have to be a high-speed highway. Fifty, fifty-five mile an hour speed limit is fine for truck access and use, both locally and, and commercially.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Good morning.
My name's Ryan Howe. I live on two-four-five-three-two-four-eighty-fourth Avenue. My address is actually Sherman. But it is where the north proposed fifty-one-hundred-foot option is. I don't have a whole lot to say besides, obviously, I don't want to see the highway get degraded from, or down to a gravel road for, for me and the other people that live on it. But that fifty-one-hundred-foot option is going to potentially cut my acreage in half. My house and small field and pasture is one lot, and that's going right through the middle of it. And to me, that seems like it would drastically reduce my property value with half of my property being on the other side of the road that I wouldn't be able to utilize as I do now. So, I would hate to see any of that happen.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you. Oh. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Lauren Anderson from Del Rapids at four-seven-nine-eight-one-two-forty-fourth Street. That 102 and, or 244th Street is a primary user farm-to-market road for a lot of traffic, truck traffic especially, that goes into the Jasper Grain Terminal or into the Pipestone Cargill Terminal, or goes and disperses off to the south and east. And to degrade some of these roads down to a gravel surface, you know what it's like this year. And to maintain that, it costs a terrific amount to be passable and things like that. And so, I encourage the commission to continue maintaining that road 104 going into 102. It's just a greatly needed road because it's a main access road into some of the markets, into the Minnesota area. And then, also, it brings a lot of traffic from the southern part of Moody County down to that area, too. And so, it is just, it's just needed. And we encourage you to maintain the good hard-surface roads up there, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming. Okay, any other questions anybody has right now? There's a lot of information presented, and I think we're going to all need a little time to digest some of that, so. Okay, I don't see any other questions. So, that takes us to item thirteen, which is to consider bid results and award recommendation for Project MC-18-109. DJ Boothey.
Morning, commissioners. DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. On April third, we opened bids for MC-1809, which is a structure replacement for Bridge 50-231-130. And this bridge is on Slip-Up Creek, just north of County Highway 130 and just west of County Highway 121. Of the bids that we received, Pram Construction was the lower, lowest bidder at five-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. And we're recommending that we award this contract. The estimated cost from the engineer was four-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand dollars. But as we found out through several different bid openings, the contractor schedules are pretty full this year. And so, this is a little bit over. We don't believe that it's so far over that we should reject all bids. And so, we are recommending that we award this contract to Pram. I will stand by with any questions.
Make a motion to award this contract to Pram.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions? If not, roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Takes us to your next item, which is to authorize the highway department to purchase two Ford F-150 trucks.
Commissioners, as part of our budgeted equipment replacement for 2019, we're requesting to purchase two Ford F-150s off of the state of South Dakota contract. They are replacing a group of vehicles, but most notably 0302, which is a Chevy pickup, Chevy 2500 pickup. It's got a hundred-and-seventy-five, or a hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand miles on it, about nineteen years old. And then, an SUV that's 0102. It's a 2010 GMC Yukon with about a hundred-and-sixty-one thousand miles on it. We, we moved around several different pickups and vehicles within our fleet over the last couple of months. And so, we're looking at surplusing probably about a half a dozen vehicles in whole. But as part of this purchase, these are the two vehicles that they would be replacing. These two pickups would go to our engineering division. One would be our engineering supervisor, and the other one would be our engineering specialist, Melissa. So, I'll stand by for any questions. Oh, I'm sorry, the, the total cost for each of these trucks is thirty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars, and it is from Sioux Falls Ford. So, I'll stand by if you have any questions.
Questions for DJ?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth? Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, DJ. That takes us to item fifteen. Carrie Benz, who's been waiting very patiently here. It's a motion to authorize the Human Services Director to submit shelter-plus-care housing voucher application for Safe Home.
Good morning, Commissioner. And I can make this incredibly short. This morning, we're here asking for your approval to allow us to engage as a co-applicant with Sioux Falls Housing, as we have in the past, to have shelter-plus-care vouchers, which we have five of them at Safe Home. Those vouchers assist the residents in paying their rent each month if they're not able to do so on their own. This is a renewal. We've engaged in this type of agreement many times in the past over the course of five years. These funds that we are requesting from the feds do require a twenty-five percent match on our part, but we're able to do that match via services. So, by the meal. So, by the meals and the case management and the life skills that we teach at Safe Home, we're able to provide that twenty-five percent match via service, not cash. Um, the one piece that's new this year is the MOU that you have before you that we would need to sign. This is just a new form that the feds, um, kind of drummed up as a way to summarize, uh, exactly what our agreement is and how we would provide the match funds to the shelter plus care funds that we would receive from them. So, all we need is your approval to sign that, um, MOU and the agreement so that we can move forward on, again, receiving the shelter plus care vouchers.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. And next item, item sixteen, is to authorize the Chairperson to sign a conflict attorney agreement for abuse and neglect cases. Carol Mueller.
Good morning Commissioners, Carol Mueller, Commission Office. Um, as you know, we started last year with doing conflict attorney contracts and, uh, they've worked out well. We have one change within the abuse and neglect area, and that is that Jamie Weber has submitted her resignation in place of that, uh, Attorney Brad Reynolds, who was here earlier, but I know he had some court cases, so he's gone by now. But, um, is willing to step in and, uh, take a contract at this point. So, we appreciate Brad's patience on doing it and Jamie working through this. But, uh, before you, it's the opportunity to continue these services.
Any questions for Carol?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, that takes us to, uh, item seventeen, liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Karski.
Couple of them. One, didn't get a chance to mention this last week, but up in our equalization office, we have two individuals, David Powers and An, and I apologize in advance, Amber, if I butcher your last name. Amber Mauricio have, um, met all requirements to, for a professional designation of certified appraiser assessor. Um, great deal of work goes involved in getting this designation and just shows the professionalism of that staff and their desire to do a good job for the taxpayers of Minnehaha County. So, congratulations to them and just recognize the work and efforts that they put into obtaining that designation. Secondly, yesterday afternoon, Commissioner Barth joined me in meeting with, um, DJ Boothey, our Highway Superintendent. Um, just kind of a little update, I guess. And Jeff was there just because he's been involved in, uh, County Road one oh four. I think we have five miles of gravel County Road in Minnehaha County and County Road one oh four is two of those five miles. But, there's been an issue with, uh, some water out there and unnamed lake is what we are calling it. But, we're trying to work with, um, McCook County and it's, it's a drainage issue. Trying to figure out options, what we can do for that landowner to make his land either usable or to, in some way, um, fix the problem that exists out there. So, it's an ongoing thing and, um, we're gonna give it our attention for a little while to see what we can do. It's been caused by both the rain, the snow. Um, is it a one-year, is it a ten-year event? We, we're not absolutely certain, but it, it is an ongoing issue that's occurring out there, so we'll keep an eye on that. Um, a little bit about what's going on in the highway department. It's gonna be a busy year in the highway department. And if you travel the roads, County Roads in Minnehaha County, you're gonna run into detours and, and those beautiful orange traffic cones, no matter where you go in the county. Um, we have twenty-two bridges and culverts being replaced and sixty miles of pavement maintenance and reconstruction. Um, we're putting eight and a quarter million dollars into highway projects, um, this year. So, if you travel out and about Minnehaha County, be patient. It is progress. It, it will make our lives safer and easier, but, um, you know, the highway workers, just pay attention and be safe.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Barth.
I, I just would, um, go on after what Commissioner Karski said and, and suggests that the equalization did a great job this year and the fact that we had so few appeals reflects really well on their efforts. And, uh, then I'd go back to the highway issue and, uh, yeah, DJ and I went out and we looked at this one, uh, farmer's property where he has an additional seventy acres or so that are covered with water that seems to be sluggishly dissipating. Uh, and it goes, uh, into McCook County, which is part of the issue. And, uh, anyway, uh, I'll be talking to that farmer again. And, uh, he's clearly not the only farmer with issues in this county. And, uh, let's hope it dries out a little bit.
Commissioner Hiberger?
I have a list. So, be patient with me. Um, as you know, I was gone last week and so I have quite a few different things to report out on. Um, I sit on the State JDAI Executive Board, which is a juvenile board. Chuck Freiberg, who represents, uh, United Judicial Service and Annie Brokenleg, who is the State Coordinator for the juvenile side, um, will be attending a training program, which is entitled Reimagining Juvenile Justice: Positive Youth Development. Um, and then after that, South Dakota will be training, this is a Train Your Trainer program in Denver. And then South Dakota will be training thirty individuals across the state from probation, um, detention, shelter care and diversion programs. And the, um, it's a six-week module course that takes place over six months in peer. And two of our JDC staff will be attending that. I did talk to, um, Jamie yesterday and he's getting close to finalizing what two, um, staff members from JDC will be attending that training. Um, I also attended, uh, the Sioux Falls Development Foundation. This last week put on a Development Connections Elected Officials Tour at the Bell Incorporated here in Sioux Falls. It's a company that makes boxes, which I'm not just talking cardboard boxes. Um, they make a lot of Happy Meal boxes and a lot of other things, butter boxes and everything. It was a very interesting tour. And then after the tour was over, we talked with the owner, uh, the CEO about, um, issues that he deals with in, in a very large business. They are one of the ten top box makers in the United States. And that's here in Sioux Falls in our industrial area. Um, the Sioux Empire Development Foundation will be doing more tours in the future and they will be contacting you. And I would encourage you, if it works into your schedule, to try to do one or two of them. I learned a lot just from the one that I've already been on. Um, they last about an hour and they're late in the day. Then I also had the South Dakota Association County Commissioners Board of Directors meeting last week. Representative DeVal and a representative from the Governor's Office discussed Senate Bills one eighty-nine, which is the recovery bill, and Senate Bills one ninety, which is the peace fund. Both of those have to do with the pipeline, don't affect Minnehaha County. But, there was a lot of conversation on what that, um, what those two bills will do in the event of, um, the pipeline going through state of South Dakota. And where that, um, those bills had started with, more or less, was the two-mil requirement, um, each county has when there's a natural, when there's a disaster in their county. And that conversation came up, uh, because of two mils for Minnehaha County. I can't remember how much it is, Carol. It's like? Yeah, twenty-some million dollars would be our county responsibility if there was a disaster in our county. Well, we don't have twenty-some million dollars, neither do any of the other counties that would be affected by the two mils. And, um, Representative DeVal said that hopefully we will be bringing that back next year to address that particular. That was the bill that we brought forward to try to address the pipeline issue. That was laid aside and, um, Senate Bill one eighty-nine and one ninety were passed. But, looking forward to next year, twenty twenty, that we will also be going back to that two-mils, two-mils obligation that counties are under because none of us can afford it. Um, we also talked about a new program, which Carol and Craig and I have been working hard to figure out all the details. But, the, the report that was given at our association meeting was a reinvestment. Um, so if a farmer comes in or anyone comes in with a farm project for, uh, for a CUP, um, uh, conditional use permit, any monies that are paid in sales and use tax to build that project would be paid back to the counties if the owner that's coming in with the project for the, um, conditional use permit would fill out the paperwork. Those tax dollars would come back to the county to be used however we wanted. They would go into the general fund. Those monies could be used if, say, there's a road issue connected with this problem. We could take some of those monies and put it back into that road. It would be up to the discretion of the county commissioners as to how those dollars amounts would be used. It's a brand-new program. In fact, the paperwork that we were giving did not correspond with what was being told us. And so, we did a lot of phone calls to figure it out. They're working on the paperwork. And it's through the South Dakota Development, um, Corporation, the Governor's Office. Could be a very big deal for Minnehaha County. So, more to come on that. Talked about the big fund requirements on the highway department and how that has been impacting the state of South Dakota. In two thousand and sixteen, the state invested nine million dollars in the big project, which is our, uh, bridge fund. Um, in two thousand and nineteen, they're gonna invest fifteen point three million dollars and they continue to increase the amount of money that they're putting into those big projects. And so, we had a good report on that. Um, we also talked about legislative issues, um, and a few other topics at the convention, uh, at the association meeting. Um, I also met with family visitation center. We fund those as one of our nonprofits. They have been working to change how they do their, um, program assistance with families. They discovered through, looking back through data, that some families were staying in their family visitation center for more than ten years. And that was the only way they could deal with having their, seeing their kids was through the visitation. So, they've been working, um, to change how their program works, giving hope and encouragement for these families to move forward in a responsible manner, to do healthy parenting with their kids without being, using the family visitation center as a crutch. And by doing that, they've been able to get some of these families off that have been coming there for years and make their cases shorter, um, with their organization and be able to meet more families in the beginning needs and teach them how to move forward. They provide reports back to the judges so the judges can assist in the progress in the court system because usually that's how they get into the family visitation center in the, in the first place. Um, they're also talking about, you know, how do we, they need more room in their facility. They are not large enough for the space and so that's also a conversation for them. They also visit with children's inn, um, a little bit about their budgeting and building. And they just wanted to remind the commission, which I think we're all aware of, that the, um, twenty-some million dollars that they got from Denny Sanford is specifically for a building and not for funding this next year. And they hope that we would continue to look favorably upon them as we look at our budgets, budget cycle. Then I was at the meeting for the state for the criminal justice response to people with mental illness. They actually, the Sheriff's Office touched on a few of the things this morning as far as, um, one of the things that our committee did was recommended back to the state that the CIT position that was created under that House bill, um, a year ago, they created a one-year position for a CIT, created a position for a CIT person to develop the criteria and these classes that our sheriff's officers have been taking. Um, the DCI from the state came in and talked about how important this CIT position had been to his office as they go statewide training officers in not just big cities like Minnehaha County, but the rural counties where they weren't able to take an officer, um, out of their county to send them to the forty hours training. And, um, they want to, the, um, DCI was very encouraged that this was a needed position to move forward the training. I'm not gonna go through all the numbers, but some of the things that were interesting. CIT-trained officers since September of two thousand and eighteen have been forty-one new officers have received the forty-hour CIT training. And it goes on from there, the list of people that have received the training, um, to, to, for our mentally ill people. Um, upcoming CIT forty-hour trainings in the state of South Dakota will have seven more between now and November. Those are the forty-hour classes and they're willing to add more. And so, um, it's just exciting that in the last couple of years that we've had this, this bill pass, the work that they have done to, to, uh, to educate more people on how to deal with our mentally ill and the justice system. We also talked about the competency evaluation, not only at the state one, but at our, um, at the state mental illness board, but also at the state association board. At the state association board, the part was interesting that the, this last period of payouts, we get paid out as a county for, um, the competency evaluations that are done through the court services. We're reimbursed for those. There were only like four for the last quarter that came into the state to be paid, which was kind of unusual. There just weren't that many competency evaluations that came through. And I don't think there was any from Minnehaha County in that period. The state mental health oversight board is looking at the length that it's taking to complete those competency evaluations. They used to take months. We're down to thirty-nine days. According to state law, they're supposed to be within twenty-one days. So, we had a lot of discussion about why did we pick twenty-one days? I was on that first group that set out some of these recommendations. You know, what were the reasons for picking twenty-one days and is thirty-nine days a more reasonable, um, length of time to get them completed? Some of the things, the lag of time appears to be that it's between when the client is seen by the evaluator and when they're actually giving those reports back to the courts. And so, they, our suggestion was that we need some further, um, data as to figure out what is the problem? Is it, is it the twenty-one day thing or is it that we have a lag time in between when the reports are actually filed? There is a mental health court pilot and I believe it's in Pennington County. We are looking at putting a ment, well, we have a, a judge on board now to start a mental health court here in Minnehaha County. But, the pilot program in Pennington County, um, reported that they've seen a thirty-nine percent decrease in repeat offenders from the, and they are, they are, uh, serving the severely mentally ill clients. But, they've seen a thirty-nine percent decrease in repeat offenders and a fifty-plus percent reduction in violent crimes since they've started their mental health court in Pennington County. We're still looking at the competency restoration in the jails. That's a conversation that's still continuing going on, obviously, with the sheriffs. And there was some conversation about possibly doing it as a pilot program. Um, so we were kind of updated on where that was going on. Uh, Vera Tele, uh, Vera Care Telehealth also reported and some continued legislative updates. I think I have one more thing. Um, next week, I will be, um, at the Justice and Safety Challenge Convention. There was one last fall where quite a few people attended and now we have our spring conference. And there will be, I think, about nine people from Minnehaha County attending that. I just wanted to put a plug in for our Human Services Center. They were asked by the Justice and Safety Challenge, which is our MacArthur Grant, to prepare a poster to be put up at the convention on the, um, a hallway of posters on different projects. And, um, Minnehaha County will have a jail reenter, reentry, South Dakota-style, um, poster up there. This is, I just got the paper today that just talks about the things that we're doing in Minnehaha County. The, um, Safety and Justice Challenge will be putting together the poster once we get this, so we don't have to transport it there. But, Carrie will be out there and be running a booth for Minnehaha County on what we have done with jail reentry program, um, trying to get our people safely from the jail setting out into services and to reconnect them with services. And talks about the decrease, um, decrease in jail days because of this program and the decrease in bookings and money saved and also, um, the outcomes for the participants in the programs. And, and, um, so it's a really good poster and I think she will probably report on it after we get back from that convention. So, we have kind of an idea of what we saw when we were at the Safety and Justice Challenge. So, that was really fast of everything I had to tell you, so.
Well, thanks. If you could maybe get us a copy of that poster, that would be great, so we could all see that. Commissioner Karski.
A lot of overlap between what Commissioner Hiberger is doing with all those initiatives and the triage and, you know, the, the twenty-one day period for competency. I mean, you have twenty-one days to understand what you're being charged with and to aid in your defense. It's like saying the beatings will continue until morale improves. It just doesn't make a lot of sense. But, um, I, I kind of have an understanding of, you know, we have to have some, but timeline on those things, but.
The competency evaluation is just the evaluation. Is this person competent? And, um?
It's not requiring them to become competent.
No. Um, and, and what they do in a competency, which, in order to become competent, um, it was kind of interesting. They said it's basically like a civics test. Do you know what a judge is? Do you know what a public defender is? Do you know what your rights are? That's what a competency evaluation, it doesn't have anything to do with that, um, you're mentally ill. It has, I mean, it does, but it also has mostly to do with, do you understand what your, what your rights are?
Yeah, trying to determine whether they can competently assist in their own defense, so.
If I, I forgot a couple of things here. Today, at noon, um, we have Travis Parker. He's a consultant that we hired for the triage project. He is in town. I'll be meeting with him and Aaron Turska, the mayor, um, and some, you know, President of Sanford and Navara will also be president, present. We have a leadership meeting. And then tomorrow morning at eight-thirty, we are touring the County Detox Facility. And from there, we are going to tour the city annex, um, where the discussion has been ongoing about locating the triage facilities. So, I'll have a little bit more for you next Tuesday, but that's a couple of things that'll be happening here with the triage project. Just, again, letting you know, we're, it's state, we're trying to stay ahead of it and keep it moving. As the sheriff referred to it, keep that train going because it is like moving a train.
Madam Chair, I just have a question for Commissioner Hiberger. On the, um, uh, what is it here? On the, uh, XL Pipeline, not, I'm sorry, on the, the tax to help with quote-unquote disasters.
Yes.
If, if the problem is in Harding County, do we have to raise the money to cover it?
No. Are you talking about the two mils?
Yeah.
No, if we have a disaster in Minnehaha County.
We've got our pipeline already.
Yeah. But, if we have a disaster in, in, in Minnehaha County of some type, we would have to come up with the first twenty-some million dollars before? with the first twenty-some million dollars before state aid would kick in. And, and obviously, those numbers, when they, those laws were probably made, obviously, it was a smaller number.
I was, I was worried we were contributing to a pool
No.
for the expected, uh, costs of
No.
defending the XL Pipeline against Greenpeace or whatever.
No.
Good question. Thank you. Okay, so that was a lot, a lot of really exciting things going on. Um, I think we all share the excitement about the triage project moving forward and some of the other progress that we've seen with mental health issues. The only update I would give is that I did meet with the Sheriff's Office yesterday to begin the discussion about budgeting. Budgeting's right around the corner now. And I know we all anxiously look forward to that process every year. But a lot of hard work is done. And, and so we had good discussion about that. And, um, we'll be starting our budgeting hearings here in about a month. And new business. Is there any new business? Any old business? If not, I entertain a motion to recess the Minnehaha County Commission meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We will recess for about ten minutes and around eleven. Um, we will reconvene.